Yeah, we're ready?
Yeah. He'll join eventually.
All right. I'm going to, acting as vice commissioner. I am calling this meeting of the Planning Commission for February to order. First order of business is roll call. Mr. Klucker is not here, and I'll note that he has resigned recently from the commission. Richard Spiker is here. Jason?
Here.
Tony?
Here.
Colin?
Present.
Great. So we have a quorum. We can proceed. First item is approval of the December 17th, 2024, meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Tony's made a motion. Second?
I'll second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 The next item that was on the previous minutes was nomination or election of officers. So we need to fill the chairman's role.
In, in light of Mr. Klucker's resignation, I'll nominate Mr. Spiker as the chair.
Second.
I'd second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Thank you.
In, in light of the shifting of Mr. Spiker to chair, I'll nominate Colin Russ as vice chair.
I would second that.
You're telling me so.
All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any objection?
I'm saying.
Yeah, that's the reason to show up for meetings. Thank you. I would ask our secretary to send a note to Mr. Klucker thanking him for his many years of service in leading the commission. All right. Next item on the, this agenda is public comments and correspondence. Do you have any correspondence?
No, there is no correspondence.
Any public comments? I hear none. We'll move on. Thank you. Old business. We're talking about the Planning Commission's 2025 goals and priorities. Do you have anything?
All I'd like to state is that we had our special meeting before this, a regular meeting where we met with the consultants to go through our character area analysis. And I, I plan to follow up with the team at Michael Baker to talk through some of the goals and objectives that they have. I know that they've, they have a, a list, I'm sure, formulated from all of the plans that they vetted, and I would like to then bring that to the Planning Commission. So as we work through this project, the hope was that the Planning Commission would be able to prioritize their goals and, their goals for 2025. So at this point, though, we are working on this character area analysis and hoping to inform our next steps.
Jason, do you have any other thoughts at this point?
As far as the goals go, I think we're on the right track.
I can't hear you.
I think we're on the right track now with the, looking at tweaking our zoning, making things more flexible in the future. So it should be an exciting year.
Colin?
I agree. I think it was a great conversation beforehand. So thank you to the Michael Baker team. There's definitely a lot of opportunities here, so this is a great focus for us for 2025.
Okay. Tony?
Agreed.
Agreed. Okay. Bylaws.
Sure. So just to note, our, our agenda is slightly changed because our bylaws informed us, our current bylaws informed us that the order in which our agenda should be is actually the way that you see it here on this agenda for today. Cooper, Cooper and I have worked through the current, the revised bylaws that you've, that you've had. We started with a template that we received actually from Denny Puko, who is going to be train, training the, or providing some training to the Planning Commission here shortly. So this was something that we used, we used a template that he provided us, that he suggests to many municipalities when they're redoing their bylaws. And then we added in some language that we still need to revise in Article Two, which is the enabling, Cooper, what is it? It's the Article Two for the powers and duties. It actually is the enabling legislation or enabling policy found in the City of Erie's ordinance that is for the creation of the Planning Commission. But we do need to also pull out some language from the saldo, because if you, if you notice, this, this really talks about any agency, authority, or department. So that's really internal workings, but also the Planning Commission is also for the community at large. So we have to pull in that additional language. I just wanted to note that for our revisions. Also in the membership, the Article Two, this, there's, I just noticed a typo. There's EAC listed there. Some of this language was pulled in from the Environmental Advisory Council bylaws that talks about attendance. And so I, I'm happy to discuss that or have, you know, have you have a discussion around that new language that's presented there to you today. And then we have a section that is more robust under Article Five, Six, Seven, Eight. It's Article Eight for roles and responsibilities. Cooper, am I missing anything in terms of big changes?
Is there anything in the ordinance or the bylaws about types of who's qualified to be a member or requirements for?
In the current bylaws?
Yeah.
No. Not that I remember. Like, do you have to be a City of Erie resident typically?
Yeah.
No, there's nothing, there's nothing currently in the bylaws from 1968 or 78.
Okay.
But that's a good, that's a, that's a good point. Would you like us to draft some language around?
It feels like you should be a resident if you're deciding how our city is shaped, right?
Right.
Should there be a time limit, like a resident of so long?
Yeah. They're paying taxes here.
I was thinking at least a year.
Somebody'd have to know them to nominate them.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah.
Yes. Go ahead, Cooper.
Oh, some of the examples we saw were a lot more strict about like, one member has to be an architect, one member has to be this and that, which we didn't include in this, we could. But the example Denny Puko sent didn't have any of that.
It feels like someday you might run out of us, but while you have two of us and there's two or three others in town.
Yeah. We could always show you that language. I can send, we can send that out to you and you can decide, we don't have to, we're not going to approve these, you're not going to approve these bylaws today. So we can send you some of those examples. Another comment about the resident is that I know in the EAC, I believe for their non-voting members, you have to be at least one year living in the City of Erie.
That's what I thought.
So we can put, we, we can draft language around, you know, the, those stipulations and then send them back out to you for next time.
Okay. That would be appreciated.
Yeah. I think we would hope aspirationally that the mayor and city council would always want a licensed architect on the Planning Commission if, if they're available.
Okay. You're promoting yourself, Jason.
I don't.
All right. So, so you're-
If, if you lost both of us, you'd want to replace with one.
Are you in favor of having the resident be at least one year resident in the City of Erie? Okay.
I think so. That's-
Did you have any comments around anything else under membership? Oh, go ahead, Tony.
Well, I don't know if it's membership, and I thought I saw it, maybe I didn't. Was there term limits, like how long you could be on it? And I thought I saw it, now I can't find it.
Yes, it's under Section One, under Article Three, Section One. It, it says that it's a four-year term.
But how many terms?
Oh.
Yeah, that's what I'm seeing, the four-year term, but it's not saying how long you can keep being on it.
That's right.
That was not, that was not specified, but we, yeah.
You would cross over your term, if you, even if you had more than three terms, at some point you're crossing over a new mayor that-
Right.
Right.
There's new governments that have to reappoint you, so.
That's how I saw it, too.
We can take a look also to see some examples around that language and just throw it out there. If that's something that, you know, if you, if you want to put like a two-year, two-time term limit on, you, you know, we can, we can have a discussion around that. If we, I don't know if you remember, if you found examples on, with anything with that? No?
If you got willing to, here's, I wouldn't kick them out.
I was gonna say, I don't like the idea of term limits. I just was curious, like, we're gonna-
What about?
Well, there are benefits to that if you potentially have a, someone who might not be participating as much.
Well, that's what the attendants would kick them out.
I was gonna say, I did see that wording. Yes.
What about connectivity to the other committees and commissions, like Rich is on the VPRC, my seat on the Historic Review Commission? Should that be interlaced?
In terms of, in terms of, not as a conflict of interest, but, or are you, are you, are you stating that, that the commissioners should have a connection or have a, have a-
Well, each one of those committees or commissions has language that says they're drawing from us, but do we have any language in here that says we're giving to them?
To them? No, we don't have. I mean, we can add-
I don't know that it's critical. It just feels like it should be reciprocal.
But your tie to the HRC is not, is it tied through the Planning Commission? Not, not necessarily. It's just that you're an ex-
Those are the things we probably want to have clarified, is what, what the kind of lines of sight are between the Planning Commission and the different bodies.
Right.
So-
Why do, why do I not have to report back to the Planning Commission what I learned at HR? I mean, you could do that, too, but it shouldn't-
Well, you, under your current bylaws, you do have the ability to have like subcommittees. But I haven't, I did not read anything where you're like a liaison, you're an ex officio of the HRC. That's your, that's your title.
Yeah, but in the HRC bylaws, I think it says that you have to take a Planning Commission member as a liaison.
On the HRC?
But I'm not voting on that one.
You're not?
And then Rich's seat, I think it says the same thing on the Bladed Property Committee, except I have a voting. But he's voting.
He's voting. Okay.
Which is weird, double standards. I'm not trying to, it should be both are the same, not different.
I think that might be more of a question that we should, I know that we have a solicitor in our audience, but I think I, I'd like to ask the solicitor that question, if there's one, a conflict of interest, and two, if, if you're going to be a voting member, and, well, there's, yeah, there, there, that should probably be in the bylaws to some degree. You are a voting member, and then you vote here as well for the BPRC.
Yes.
So-
I wasn't trying to unseat him on his BPRC. I was just trying to say there's a double, a double standard with that.
But I think in the bylaws, do you know for the bylaws for the BPRC, are there?
So it's, it's outlined in the Urban Redevelopment Law, which allows for the municipality act of Bladed Property Review Committee, that a Planning Commission member have a voting poll on the BPRC.
Okay.
So when the city enacted the ordinance to create the BPRC, essentially they adopted the Urban Redevelopment Law, which outlines-
Which outlines.
-all members of the BPRC.
And I don't think that it's necessary to outline that in your bylaws. I don't think that we have to state that because it's, it's the Planning Commission bylaws, but there should, there may be some language we could provide if you are going to be a member of another committee, XYZ, something of that nature.
But if you don't provide that seat voting, there's no motivation to just go be an observer. And I don't have any reporting role back to this committee by our bylaws, so like, why should I go other than to be a happy citizen that can smile and-
Well, and anything that the HRC, anything that the HRC is voting on has to come in front of the Planning Commission anyways.
Correct. So I'd have to hear it twice.
You will.
With no influence.
Well, you, you're, you're taking the vote to, to approve it for-
On the backend, yeah.
You're taking, you are taking a vote to approve it to council.
Ultimately, here.
Yes, here.
Yeah.
Right.
I'm just saying the plan, whoever it is, it's me currently, but whoever it is in the future, that's that liaison.
And that is in the bylaws of the, okay. I understand. Okay. But it doesn't necessarily have to be in the Planning Commission bylaws.
No, no. It should be in theirs, probably, but-
Well, we're redoing, we're going to be redoing the HRC bylaws, so we can take a look at that and see, see if they're, if they-
Should be written out or written in as a voting-
Voting member.
That rotates amongst us, right?
Okay. I can, I can look into that. That's HRC, though.
Yeah.
So, okay. Okay. Just to go back to the bylaws for membership, anything else under membership that you wanted to discuss? Because that's, that was a lot inputted there.
Yeah. When you're looking at term limits, it would be nice to know what, what other authorities or commissions in the city do. Do they have anything to say?
I do think some of them do have term limits.
Yeah.
So we can, we can get that to you. Yes.
I just, there's a point of-
What's the precedent? Right. Okay. That's fine.
Anything else?
Anything under officers or election of officers, meetings? And then roles and responsibilities or committees and work groups?
I have stuck in my mind, I don't remember whether it was looking at this 1968 bylaws or not, does the, it sticks in my mind that the secretary had to be a member of the commission?
The way that the bylaws, and correct me if I'm wrong, Cooper, the way that the bylaws are written currently, that the secretary is, is not part of the commission.
Okay.
So it's separate and it's a, they're not a voting member. They're just voted in as the secretary. Now, that could change, too. I, I, we could have one of the commissioners be the secretary, as we do for most of our other boards, but it's not, we can keep it as, as it is now.
That, that's fine.
Yeah.
I just, there was something rattling around in the back of my head.
Yes. Is that, is that what, you remember, Cooper?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
And the draft would mean that the secretary would be a member of the commission. I think this draft would make the secretary a member of the commission. It would have to be a member of the commission, I think.
The draft that we have right here?
Yeah.
Okay, see, that's what I thought I had read, Jackie.
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't want that necessarily.
No, we're, we're good with Cooper.
Yeah.
He's efficient.
Right.
I don't think it's a voting member. The secretary is here officers with assistance of city staff, as may be made available, shall keep the minutes and records of the commission, prepare the agenda, provide notice of all meetings.
Article One, chair, secretary elected from among the members of the commission, though.
Secretary elected from among the members of the commission.
Right.
Yeah. So the secretary would have to be a member of the commission.
So I have to double check, because what you asked me initially may be the way that the bylaws currently state that the secretary is part of the commission, but-
Yeah.
So are you, are you, are you in favor of having the secretary separate from the-
I'm, I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. You're fine? Okay.
Yeah.
Any other comments or questions before?
Can we move on?
Yep.
No?
Okay.
Next item, new business. Anything under subdivision and land development? Nothing?
None.
Okay. Rezoning?
None.
None? So, yeah, I think you're it. Sorry.
All right. Good afternoon. Aaron Semper, Executive Director of the Redevelopment Authority, here today acting as secretary at the Bladed Property Review Committee to present five properties to the Planning Commission. 1012 West 19th Street, 1014 West 19th Street, 2656 Cochrane Street, 933 East 5th Street, and 1123 East 11th Street. All five of these properties were declared blighted by the BPRC. The sheets contained within your packet outline the issues associated with the property, the dates in which they were declared blighted by the BPRC, and sign it, kind of some of some brief overview of the property, where it is, how it stands. And at the bottom of it, it is a recommended reuse or action against the property, which is defined in what is supposed to be presented to you for your action today. So the Bladed Property Review Committee pursuant to the statute requesting the City of Erie Planning Commission designate such properties blighted as they may be certified to the Redevelopment Authority as such for action, so.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in take? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Awesome. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other business?
Yes. Our last item for new business is that we have a presentation from Troy Truax, Truax? Is that how you say your last name? From Michael Baker International, is one of our, one of our team, team members on the character area analysis. He's going to be providing the commission with a presentation on creating an effective hybrid zoning code. So Troy, thank you for being here, and I hope that you can hear us, and if you could just test it out, so we can make sure that we can hear you.
Yep, I can hear you. Can you hear me, Jackie?
Yes, perfect. Perfectly.
Okay, I'm gonna do this, share my screen, so I might have to, I'm gonna put it on power presentation mode, but I might have to switch the layout just to make sure you're seeing the right version, so. Go to the presentation mode. Can you see the correct version on the screen, Jackie?
Yes, we can see, it's not in presentation mode, but we can see your, there we go. Yep, you're, that's great.
It's always a difficult when I got a couple of screens going on. So, good afternoon, again, Troy Truax with Michael Baker International. First, I want to applaud your participation in being a member of the City Planning Commission. I also have served on my local municipal planning commission, and this is my 25th year, so I greatly appreciate your deliberation on items and appreciate your time and efforts in doing that. So Jackie asked me today to present to you information regarding of how creating an effective hybrid zoning code and our perspectives and my experience here at Michael Baker. I believe the workshop session that my colleagues Seth and Samantha gave is a good foundation to this discussion, and we'll talk a little bit more about that. What I wanted to share today were my perspectives and insights of doing this work for the past, going on now 29 years, as a certified planner throughout Pennsylvania and beyond, the use of conventional, what we call or sometimes known in the industry as Euclidean zoning, conventional or traditional zoning, versus what is becoming more of a, an application for zoning and land use regulation, a form-based zoning approach. And I wanted to give an overview of the differences between each and then share two case studies. One, South Middleton Town Center Form-Based Zoning District and the City of Martinsburg Hybrid Zoning Ordinance. And then I'll wrap up with any questions that you might have. So conventional or Euclidean zoning, the term Euclidean comes from the court case back in the 1920s where the City of Euclid and Amber Realty, a case was settled that allowed the City of Euclid to actually indeed use its police powers to use zoning to create various different zoning districts within its jurisdiction. So that's where the term Euclidean comes from. But conventional zoning or Euclidean zoning in its true form separates land uses in distinct zones or zoning districts with specific permitted uses contained therein. The, the image that you see on the screen is actually the legend from your current zoning map incorporated, adopted, or enacted with your current zoning ordinance. And you can see it has a variety of residential, commercial, industrial, and then special area, your waterfront, types of zoning districts. Conventional code like yours focuses on specific uses within those categories and typically assigns buildings and/or spaces only one use. And really what it becomes in terms of Euclidean approach, it really separates uses in their form and function, if you will. So we have, you know, separate areas for residential zones, separate areas for commercial, lighted manufacturing, or other industrial types of uses, et cetera. With respect to conventional and form-based zoning, here's a side-by-side comparison. Again, conventional zoning focuses on the use, specific uses and their regulation. It often segregates uses into those distinct zoning districts. It's very proscriptive, states what you don't want typically, and it's usually unpredictable because you cannot react to any types of market forces or new ideas. You're often having to be reactive in terms of your land use regulation work. In contrast, the form-based approach, which is, is really a good foundation, was the character area analysis that we talked about with you at your workshop with Seth and Samantha, my colleagues here at Michael Baker. But a form-based approach looks at the urban design and human scale, meaning the form and function of uses and their context within the overall urban fabric or design of, in your case, the City of Erie. It definitely stresses the importance of mixed use versus the segregation of uses. It is prescriptive. It helps state and establish an expectation of what you as a community want, and it's also predictable, so that developers or entities wanting to build in your city or redevelop in your city, they have an understanding and an expectation of what is, is expected of you based upon your community development goals established in your zoning. It's proactive, it's forward-looking, and it's, it's, it tries to be concise and also illustrative, so a lot of graphics and other supporting illustrations that help the administration and the interpretation of the ordinance. And the organization is very helpful from a visual perspective, readability, and also user perspective. Form-based code encourages, again, mixed uses, focus again on the form of buildings and the relationship to adjoining spaces and the streetscape. So it's very much takes a human-scale approach and definitely tries to prescribe or calibrate what you want to see happen in the future versus what might be there today, but it really tries to be forward-looking and saying, this is what we want our city to look like in the future. So it really tries to establish those types of uses, but also integrates flexibility into it as well, because it allows for that mix of uses and encourages a mix of uses versus a segregation of uses. As you can see, some illustrations actually here, these illustrations were from Placemakers, actual, Michael Baker colleague of ours, Howard Blackson, who works with us now in our Design Hub group. These are his illustrations when he was at Placemakers. So very much we integrate this type of thinking into our land use reg, or regulation, or urban planning, master planning, et cetera. Form-based zoning is also based on what's called the rural-to-urban transect. Some of you may be familiar with this, but what the transect does is really, this is the basis of your character area analysis. It establishes a kind of a, a way to look at the, the spectrum of various types of intensities, uses, densities, et cetera, across the, in your case, the city landscape. So going from the left to the right goes from less intense, low-density use, all the way to higher intense, more dense uses, including special districts that in your case could be your waterfront as your special district. Another way to evaluate conventional and form-based zoning is that conventional zoning really establishes, as shown on the graphic, it establishes single-use perspectives, does- really establishes, as shown on the graphic, it establishes single-use perspectives, doesn't really include any design, but looks at, you know, the typical Balkan area regulations, four-area ratios, et cetera, for individual uses. Zoning could also include certain design guidelines that actually add more appurtenances or some type of urban design components to the conventional zoning. But the form-based code really, again, in that illustration shows that mixture of uses. It really tries to encourage, especially in urban settings, that mixed-use environment that's really what makes up the fabric of, in your case, the City of Erie. So even having residential neighborhoods in context with downtown or the downtown connection with the waterfront, et cetera, they're really, that we want to encourage a mix of uses and think about that in the context when you're preparing your new zoning ordinance going forward as a next step. So when we think about those conventional and form-based, how this all typically comes together is that usually communities want to move to more of a form-based approach, but they're really not ready to go to full length of what's called a smart code. So what often happens, it's a hybrid of both conventional zoning and form-based zoning. And just looking at some literature, some research, I evaluated some other research on this, and about, you know, the majority of new zoning codes really use this hybrid-based approach. In fact, most of the work that we do here at Michael Baker on zoning, it really uses the hybrid approach, integrating both using the existing conventional zoning ordinance that often communities are used to, but then takes that to the next level, integrates in character area analysis, the transect analysis, to really start to think about the form and function of your neighborhood and how that integrates into your new hybrid type of zoning ordinance. You can see, again, includes attributes from both traditional and form-based zoning applications. With traditional zoning, you know, includes the zoning districts, specific uses that you want to see in your community, provides that traditional code framework in some respects along with the required administrative procedures, but also too, from a form-based, starts to get into that urban design type of context. So we can start to think about, you know, instead of built-to-lines, we can think about, instead of minimum setbacks or maximum setbacks, we can think about built-to-lines, we can consider site and architectural design standards and guidelines, relationship to the public realm and streetscape, and really trying to think about what makes that community inviting and walkable and also pedestrian-friendly in the context of transportation assets that are moving people and goods throughout the community and beyond. So as we talked at your workshop at noon, we have a lot of great feedback, and again, the character area analysis that was discussed and showcased, this definitely provides a starting point, and more discussion will certainly occur on this with respect to moving forward in your zoning ordinance rewrite process. As we talked at your lunch hour workshop, certainly one starting point is looking at your current zoning map, evaluating it against the character area analysis, how you want your future community and neighborhoods to look, and also think about redevelopment, reinvestment, revitalization opportunities, and how the future zoning districts need to support and regulate those different types of urban development, redevelopment. You just talked about some blighted properties, certainly needs to be part of that conversation as well. Again, these are some of the ideas that were talked about. For example, mixed-use commercial areas in the neighborhood, character area zone were certainly discussed and need to be part of the future discussions with respect to your zoning map and zoning ordinance rewrite. So the next couple of slides, I just wanted to go over some case studies to show you this in application. So the first case study I wanted to show was this South Middleton Town Center Form-Based Zoning District. This is a project that I actually managed for South Middleton Township in conjunction with the Borough of Carlisle in Cumberland County. As you can see here, this was a corridor study, this is a very long-time, traditional suburban corridor that actually, the starting point for this was a almost near-defunct Kmart Shopping Plaza. So that started the discussion with the Planning Commission at the township, and then through our recommendation, I heavily advocated that we needed to think about the future of that corridor in addition to that specific shopping center, and that led to the creation of the Walnut Bottom Corridor Master Plan. So with this master plan, the current zoning, as you can see, are segregated. The purple is industrial, the red is commercial, the light yellow is residential, and then the green area in that box is agriculture. And I'll just back up, the yellow area in that, in that area, the kind of the outlined area is within that red zone, or that red commercial district, that's our focus area for what we call the catalyst properties that set the stage for the Town Center Zoning District that was created as part of the implementation to this plan. So this was the vision, the current picture there on the left-hand, smaller picture, again, it's very much an open, high-speed corridor coming in from South Middleton Township into downtown Carlisle. This connects directly to Interstate 81. And then to the left of that small inset picture is the Kmart shop, or the former Kmart Shopping Plaza. The vision here was to create more of a walkable urban type of town center, which, again, you can see by the vision statement that was actually created and confirmed in the master plan, they really wanted to transform this commercial corridor into a vibrant, walkable, mixed-use town center with a variety of housing choices supported by neighborhood-scale businesses, regional employment, unique local dining and cultural and public space amenities. So with that, these three catalyst sites really set the stage. Catalyst Site 2 is where the Kmart Shopping Plaza is. Catalyst Site 1 was a former United Telephone headquarters, just a large megalith building sitting there for decades, empty and vacant. A lot of area around that through the Carlisle UPMC, Carlisle Hospital, and other office, residential and commercial uses, really much a vibrant area, including warehouse distribution because of the connection with Interstate 81 and that warehouse distribution corridor that South Central PA and the interstate corridor overall has become. And then Catalyst Site 3 was a vacant parcel a long time ago, and the township was evaluated for mixed-use development, but never really took off until this opportunity came along. The right-hand side of that slide shows now what we envisioned as using the transect approach, how this become a mixed-use town center incorporating the form-based approach into the development opportunities. And then what was the result of this project was the creation, I wrote the ordinance for them, we actually created a brand-new, form-based, hybrid-based, if you will, Town Center Zoning District, as you can see, was applied to those areas in green on the township zoning map, and the Town Center Zoning District also includes requirements for master plans, design standards, et cetera, and it has worked beautifully. This is part of the actual requirements in the Town Center Zoning District. We've incorporated the transect, we've incorporated what we call the form-based design sheets for each of those transects that were identified in the Town Center Zone. And the real proof in the pudding is immediately, as part of this process, we had developer interest. So right away, the north side of Walnut Bottom, that Catalyst Site 2 where the Sprint United Telephone Building is, this was the master plan that was immediately submitted, and right away, the residential portion of this is already taken off in the last couple of years, and then the commercial portion of that is already under development. And then adjacent, across the road, the developer that's responsible for this portion of the project readily embraced the Town Center zoning concept in the master plan, and they have also submitted this master plan to be a component of and really tied in with the adjacent developments for mixed use, including a variety of different types of housing types and uses throughout this new neighborhood, including a public park space that would be dedicated over to the township to increase its parks and recreation opportunities in this part of the municipality. So the next case study, City of Martinsburg, West Virginia, this too is along the Interstate 81 corridor, just south of Hagerstown, Maryland. I was brought in as part of my work with the city to rewrite both their zoning and subdivision ordinances, but I'll just talk about the zoning ordinance. Their ordinance was originally enacted back in 1970. Since that time, they'd have numerous text and zoning map amendments that were never officially incorporated into the overall zoning ordinance document. They also had an update to their comprehensive plan in 2018, and then on top of that, their state code akin to our municipality's planning code was updated to require new requirements for zoning. So a lot of things came into play that really forced them to update and rewrite their zoning ordinance in this case. So with respect to Martinsburg, again, these were their zoning districts on the right-hand side, so they had a plethora of zoning districts, and what we were able to do is to think about those in the context of the form-based approach, and really we applied the neighborhood characterization or transect to actually start to think about how we want to evaluate their future zoning. So again, this map, literally, this was the map that was given to me on the start of this project. It was still marked draft, again, they had never really officially enacted this, so it was really kind of a mess, to say the least, but it was a hodge-hodge of zoning districts. And also too, with respect to Interstate 81, they have three major interchanges guarding the city. They have recent commercial growth as an outgrowth to the city, and they also have an historic downtown that also need to be considered amongst all their additional development and outward growth from that core downtown area. So we use the transect approach, really use this as a basis to think about their neighborhood character areas, their character zones. We thought about this in terms of the form and function of each of these neighborhoods in the city, and that ultimately led us to actually devise this type of transect approach, and then started to think about with respect to those SR1, SR2, et cetera, including mixed uses, et cetera, that we started to identify, and this really became the basis for their new zoning map. And then those zoning district classifications that were identified then were applied back again, cross-referenced back to their, to their transect approach. And then ultimately what provided as a starting point for this project, where we had, the proposed zoning districts were 10, as you can see in the middle, and that consolidated 21 of their former zoning districts. So it really simplified and incorporated mixed-use commercial, mixed-use residential. And like I had said in your workshop, this is one instance where a city really needed to, it really truly had a suburban type of development area in the city, so we actually had to preserve that, and we specifically needed to call out suburban residential in addition to urban residential in that case. So again, this was the final zoning map, more simplistic, clearly defined, and then once we had that established, then we can start into actually establishing the zoning district within the zoning ordinance itself, and then we can start to establish what we call the form-based approach application, to think about the form and function of those different zoning districts and how urban design really starts to apply to the application and administration of the ordinance overall. And then beyond that, in addition to all the other details that are typically in a zoning ordinance, we had a very simplistic and comprehensive use of, list of uses, including, starting with this screenshot that shows principal uses, and these are all categorized out, starting with residential and lodging, there were industrial, commercial, but we really started to define comprehensively the uses that were applicable to the City of Martinsburg, define whether they were permitted by right, special exception in their case, or not permitted at all in a certain district, included mixed uses, mixed-use buildings. So we really tried to think about those types of uses, including accessory dwelling units was a huge topic of discussion, and that was also included in their zoning ordinance as well. So I know this was a lot of information, and I know the time was short, but I'd be happy, Jackie and the members of the Planning Commission, to answer any questions that you might have, but hopefully this was insightful and informative to what you are going to be starting to embark on here in the near future with your own zoning ordinance rewrite.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you very much, I think it was a good, focused, short presentation.
Thank you Troy, I, I'm, I hope that we continue to have these conversations about a hybrid approach, and also we can delve into some of those case examples, which, one of those, was it the West Virginia seemed to reflect Erie's transect well, so I, I'd like to look at that a little bit more, or would you say Martinsburg is, is a better example to look at?
Yeah, I think the City of Martinsburg because also too, it was codified, so I think, Jackie, you've provided the link to the Planning Commission members that their leisure, they can go and look at the city, the way it was codified with the city. But we have, starting with Martinsburg back, I think that was 2017, if my memory serves me correctly, I was the manager and technical lead, and we, I totally sit down and rewrote kind of an outline or a format, basically the template that we continue to use today for all of our zoning ordinance work, and it's really gotten a lot of application, both Seth and Samantha have used that extensively throughout Pennsylvania, including myself, and we used it beyond, I'm currently working down in Sykesville, Maryland on a Unified Development Code, Samantha's helping me with that too. It includes that same type of approach, plus it also incorporates a lot of other regulatory requirements. Unfortunately, in PA, you can't do a Unified Development Code for the municipality's planning code, but certainly with respect to zoning or subdivision and land development ordinance work, the zoning work, I think we've really got a good, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback from solicitors, from professionals in the industry, including attorneys that look at it, they really like the format, the ease of the document, the way it's put together. So, not to elaborate, but Martinsburg, I think, is a really good example to start to evaluate for City of Erie's application. Even though it's a different state, it's still overall is a basic, good framework to get the idea.
Also, it's, I'm glad that we're having these discussions early on because the character area analysis, which is form more than use, you know, I think it's a natural progression to be able to, you know, to have these conversations early on, to understand form-based code. And so I'm, I'm, I hope that we can have you back again to possibly present at a later time. One of the questions that I had is, do you think that, and I, during my update here shortly, I'll be talking to the commissioners about the map grant that we plan to apply, that you'll help us apply for, do you think we should also be doing an update to our comprehensive plan? Because that's, we're almost 10 years, we're almost 10 years, next year will be 10 years old.
Yeah, Jackie, that's a great point, because typically, you know, that 10-year cycle, you're updating your comprehensive plan, and then that comprehensive plan would include a future land use map, or, you know, the character area analysis is a great application for that future land use that works too. But that really provides the solid basis for the zoning map, and of course, the zoning ordinance itself. I'm working with the municipality in Carlisle, they're actually, their ordinance, their comprehensive plan is outdated, but they kind of, they started with the zoning ordinance because their ordinance was such a mess, if you will, on typewritten paper, literally, that they needed to do that first because developers were coming in left and right, and then they are working with the county to do a minor update to the comprehensive plan that would essentially serve as the basis to say, yep, our zoning ordinance is consistent with our comprehensive plan. That's, that's basically what you need to make sure that you're achieving consistency between the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance and the community development objectives that are, that are cited in that ordinance.
Right, and some may argue that even in our 10-year span, many of, many of what is in, much of what is in our comprehensive plan still is relevant today. I mean, there, there have been things that have been achieved, of course, and successes, but there are still those, those issues that we have and are still relatable today.
And Jackie, that's the same for that municipality I was talking about. They felt that their comprehensive plan still hit the mark, but they just needed to update maybe some, reevaluate their goals and objectives, and more importantly, making sure that their future land use map had consistency with not only their zoning map that we have now for them, but also the county comprehensive plan. Cumberland County literally just updated their comprehensive plan that had a character, we actually helped them with that too. It had a character area analysis, future character area approach to their future land use map, too. So that's, I think what you're saying is, the basis of your comprehensive plan is solid, it just it just maybe need to do some evaluation to ensure that there is consistency between the zoning going forward and the future land use map and community development goals and objectives.
Sure. Thank you. Anything else for Troy?
No, I...
At this point? Okay.
I think I'm pretty good.
Thank you, Troy.
Colin, any comment?
Yep.
No, I apologize. I do have to drop, but I will talk to you all later.
All right.
Bye, Colin.
Goodbye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Pleasure. Jackie, we'll be in touch.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Bye now.
Goodbye. Department of Planning and Neighborhood Resources Updates.
Yes, so we have a lot going on in the department, but I'm going to just highlight a few items that I think I just want you to be aware of, or, you know, that are kind of in the, for our next steps. One is that the, for the last couple of months, the city and the county have been working on issuing an RFP for a countywide housing plan. I'm not sure if you've heard anything about this. The city had put in the budget money, actually, the last two years, for a housing, to develop a citywide housing plan. The county then came to us and said, well, we're going out for a grant. Would you, would you like to be part of this countywide plan? And we worked with the county for quite some time. RFP was issued before the grant was received. I guess you, I've never done it that way, but you can do it that way, and sometimes the grant requires you to issue the RFP first. And turns out that the, that the city decided that they would break off from the county and do their own housing plans still. So the county is now, and it was just approved through county council, that they will be doing an Erie County housing plan, and the city, working with one said consultant, and the city is going to do their own city housing plan. I just wanted you to be aware of the, of that. So, moving forward, as I alluded to in the conversation with Troy, we, the city has already agreed to work with Michael Baker to apply for a MAPS state grant to rewrite both our zoning and our SALDO. So this character analysis will hopefully position us in a better way to apply for this grant and make a stronger application, and also possibly provide a larger amount of money if we have this analysis that we've done prior to. We also have a friend now at the state, Kathy Rosdick, as you know. I mean, I'm just stating that as jokingly, but not really jokingly. So, yes, we'll be submitting that grant in March. The deadline is March, so that will be a quick turnaround, and we already have a conversation for this week to start working on that grant. So, and Michael Baker will, will continue to help us apply for that under our open-ended contract with Michael Baker. We also are in the midst of applying for a funders network, Partner for Place Grant, for a local climate action plan, to hire a consultant to do a local climate action plan. We are in the midst right now, we need a frontline community partner, which we have a commitment from Groundwork Erie to be our partner with us, the city, and then we need a funder, a partner, a financial funder. So we're, we're having those conversations this week. The grant is due February 28th, so we are working quickly to determine our partnerships, and we've already started the writing. Sarah Peelman is helping us also, the sustainability coordinator, and we hope to apply for that grant and get that in. Now, we already did the first P4P grant, so we also have a bit of an advantage there with this, with this philanthropic foundation. So, another thing I wanted to mention to you, over the last couple of months, I've been working, and other HRC members have been working with the state. Lower State Street from Third to Eighth has already been determined as a eligible National Register Historic District. We came together, a few of us, the HRC members, Erie Downtown Partnership, EDDC, Redevelopment Authority of the City of Erie, to talk about designating more of the downtown as, and actually moving forward with this project and issuing an RFP. We did all of our due diligence. We got a commitment of $15,000 from Erie Downtown Partnership, and the Redevelopment Authority approved a matching $15,000 to issue a RFP, to hire a consultant, to designate, hopefully, you know, apply for designation of, right now, what we're looking at is Third all the way up to 12th Street, and that's on State Street, and portions of Peach and French. We've heard that the consulting fees would be anywhere between 25, 30,000, maybe 30, $30,000 to $40,000 to complete this application. It's something that, you know, at the city, we don't have the capacity to do. It's a quite detailed and involved process, but we are grateful that, you know, we have a commitment from Erie Downtown Partnership, and that we're able to use the funds through the Historic Building Improvement Grant that Race, that the Redevelopment Authority holds, and is their funding, that we are able to move forward without grant funding at this time, and expedite this process. What that means for the City of Erie is, a national designation is on, if approved, and as you may know, is a honorary designation. There holds no regulations at the city level, but it allows for so many things. It allows for tax credits, it improves tourism, placemaking, there's a whole set of benefits that come with this type, you know, there's evidence that these districts really do well in terms of real estate development, economic development, and so it would be a great benefit to the city. Plus, we'd be preserving our greatest assets in the downtown. So, I should say, our greatest built environment assets. So that's very exciting, and we hope to have that RFP issued in the next couple of weeks, and then hire a consultant to start that application. Any questions?
No.
That being said, I do want to mention that we understand, and we, the HRC specifically has stated this, that there are other districts that we should be looking at at the same time, Griswold Plaza, and also above 12th Street. You know, there are several buildings, Paca Building, which is already on the register, Manacore, and I always forget the last, you know, where Dees, that whole complex there, is it not Dees? Yeah, Dees.
Dees.
Yeah, Dees. Looking at that as a, as another portion, if it doesn't necessarily make it into this application, looking at the same time at different districts that we could also work with even Preservation Erie to help move those nominations forward. Let's see. The only other thing I wanted to mention is that the Planning Department, among all of our other projects that we're working on, we were working to develop a dashboard right now for the Lighthouse Pulaski neighborhood. This dashboard is, dashboard is like the new terminology, the new terminology, or the buzzword, you should, I should say, for a lot of local governments, and I think across the board, that's a term that's used frequently as to help provide transparency, not only to the private sector, but to the community at large. So we're working with ECAT to develop three things right now. We're going to be showing a dashboard that has to do with demographics, crime data, and then current projects that are going on in that neighborhood. We hope that we'll be able to emulate this within all of our, at some point, within all of our 17 planning areas, so that it is a central location where not only residents, but nonprofits, all different types of organizations can come to the city website and get the information that they need in, you know, in an easy and transparent manner. So that's our first initial step there. Lastly, I just, I do want to mention that Sarah Peelman has a grant with DCNR that is, it's quite a large grant, it's about, what is it, 320, 26, 350, $356,000 grant that she received, she, she applied for and received. We are assisting Sarah with that grant right now. We're down to the last year of its, of its funding timeframe. It's for a variety of things. One is a tree inventory for the entire City of Erie. A tree inventory and a, what was the other terminology, forest management, tree and management plan for the, so we have money set aside in the budget to hire a consultant to do a full tree inventory, which we've never had done before, and we need desperately. And then we have money for planting trees, and we have eight partners included in the grant. Our West Bay Front is one of them, just to name a few, Sisters of St. Joseph, Mercyhurst, who am I missing? Best, Northeast. And some, some of it is lawn-to-tree conversion, some of it is riparian buffer zones, tree plantings, maintenance and awareness and education, and then I'm missing one, one specific thing that I wanted to mention to you. But it's, it's quite an undertaking, and so we are, we are working with Sarah to expend those funds and bring all of our partners together. So, just wanted to let you know about that, because that's not been a project that I've talked about in the past, but something that, oh, I know what I wanted to mention. We are amending the scope to include Groundwork Erie into that proposal, because they hopefully will receive money for capacity, so we can buy the trees, and they can plant them and maintain them. So it's a, it's a nice partnership, and we've been, we've been talking with Groundwork Erie a lot over the last couple of weeks, and we hope to amend the scope. So, just wanted to mention that last project to you, since you haven't heard about it before. That is it. I'm sorry for being so long.
A good and productive meeting. Thank you all. There being nothing else, a motion for adjournment.
Make motion.
Second.
Before you adjourn, I'm sorry, I wanted to mention about the special meeting.
Oh, yes.
Yes. You had, you had requested that we have another working session for the character area analysis.
Yes. Would appreciate that.
Okay. Just wanted to put in the records.
All right. Having the adjournment, having been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye.